Okay, here we go. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024 City Council Meeting. Seems like time just flies really fast. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Misty.
Smack.
Here.
Clements.
Here.
Dewater.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Weir.
Here.
I'll take a motion to approve the July 2nd, 2024 Agenda, please.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number five is public discussion. If you'd like to address the council and mayor, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. Okay, moving on. Number six, approval of the consent agenda. Take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On, just a side note, I did send you the actual request for the Evansdale Fire Department's 75th Anniversary Parade by email. Before we go into number seven, because one of the items on there is approving the wage of the Chief Deputy Clerk, we would like to introduce you to Sarah Cole. She is our new Chief Deputy Clerk.
Hi, Sarah.
She's been with us for a week and a half, almost. Has it been a couple of weeks already? Wow. Yeah, been working out great. Getting a lot of things done that have been put off for a while. Yeah. So, welcome.
Crack that whip.
So, number seven is approval of the resolution calendar, please.
So moved.
Second.
That'll be a roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Excellent. Moving on, Resolution 6852 is authorizing no parking on the west side of Heather Avenue from the southern point of the cul-de-sac to Norma Avenue.
And that was requested by one of the homeowners, is that correct?
That's correct. He's actually in the audience. His name is Dan.
So I'm assuming people parking there has been an issue?
On the real estate Saturdays and Sundays, definitely during football season, it's packed up there tight. And during Hawkeye season, during the week sometime now with the Indiana Fever, we got a neighbor that likes to have get-togethers and don't have any complaints at all. It's just the parking is very congested and both sides, both sides of the streets are jam-packed. So I think you'd have trouble getting a vehicle up there, not that you couldn't, but would not be easy. It seems to be in the northern block of that two-block stretch.
And generally speaking, it is no parking on, on most streets in the city of Evansdale, the side that the mailboxes is on, but since this is a cul-de-sac, there's mailboxes on both sides.
I think when they, I think initially that from Lafayette to Norma was just one block initially, because the mailboxes, I believe, are for both houses or both sides are on the, be the west side. So I think going up the first block, there's no mailboxes on the east side. But then when you go up to the second block, which is for the cul-de-sac and the dead end is, mailboxes are on both. But the mailboxes down below are on the west side, which is the side that we're discussing.
Any questions, council?
Mayor, any remarks received from our Chief of Police? An opinion, one way or another, here?
I don't think so.
I just had a thought that, you know, just for the sake of the other residents there, you might, might give us a meeting or two for other people to come and voice their opinions. Just so they don't feel like you slid this under the table without their knowledge.
I had a similar thought.
One that I was really concerned with is 231 Eric Schmidt. And he's on that side with me on the north side of the cul-de-sac. And he does park on the west side of the cul-de-sac there. So that's why we're seeing possibly from the end of the cul-de-sac or even 217, which is Steve Oringer. Steve Oringer and I have talked and he's in complete agreement. But thought about maybe from his mailbox down, just from there to the corner of Norma, possible, just.
And that's what we're proposing, just for, so it would really just be the east side. And then you could park all the way around the cul-de-sac still. It's on the southern point of the cul-de-sac and down to Norma.
On the north side of the cul-de-sac, the only place you're gonna park is on the 228. So you could park right there by my mailbox and then on over there where Eric's at, you're only gonna get two cars there, otherwise you got driveways, boom, 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 boom.
Okay.
235 has no place to park on the street. That's a, what's her last name?
Bailey.
Bailey.
Yeah.
So her driveway is straight up there. She has absolutely no curb space. 232 has no curb space. Then I'm at 228, I've got a little bit of curb space on the cul-de-sac. And then I bought a lot next to me, which is between me and 218. So there's where I've got a lot of space there on that side. Going down, going down the other side, you got more driveways there, so.
Yeah, and I can, I can see, you know, having driven down that road a few times, that cars on both sides can be problematic. But I think Chief's got a good idea that gotta have the neighbors speak up, you know? Yeah, yeah. Don't need to start a neighborhood war here.
Yeah, from a, from the police department's perspective, I don't, I don't have an issue with the proposal. I, I just think that.
No, I don't want my neighbors mad.
Yep, so that they feel like they have an opportunity to voice an opinion, I would, I would maybe give it a meeting or two, at least.
And you'll get complaints from 218. That's who, that's who has parties. I need a nice young man.
Okay.
Have we ever had planning and zoning involved in this?
No, it says right in our, in the resolution, it's all council.
If vehicles are parked on both sides, could a fire truck get through?
Fire probably be tight.
Yeah, probably a tight situation.
Okay.
Or an ambulance.
Yeah.
I mean, either one, you know?
I've got a face maker, defibrillator. Steve Oringer's got heart problems, so that's where Steve and I were talking about it. So that's where him and I brought it up and we discussed.
Yeah, and, and people are, you know, allowed to have reasonable company come over, but, you know, you gotta be able to have safe ingress and egress, so.
I just got a little bit concerned with the congestion I parked. No, I agree. Let's talk to all the neighbors.
Okay. I would, I'd make a motion to table it for now.
Okay.
Mayor, could you send something out to all the residents on Heather? So we all kind of know what's going on, so like Chief's saying, they all know this is coming up on one side, so they don't get up one day and go, oh, we can't park on this side anymore. It's just communication transparency is all I'm thinking. Makes a good, his thoughts are very good.
I believe if I heard correctly, Adam, did you motion to table?
Correct.
I motioned to table it, yes.
Yep, I, I believe I'm in favor of that. I don't have an issue with this. But yes, I would just like, you know, the, the, the option for anybody if they do have a difference of opinion or if they have just a difference at all. Just to give them notification, I think, would at least be the common courteous thing to do. So I would second Adam's motion and give them the two weeks until the next council meeting to make their response heard to us.
Got it. Will that notice come from the city?
Generally, that is not standard procedure.
Your neighborhood group, will you be the ones notifying? Your neighbors?
We, we could, I mean, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about it.
Or just type up a little explanation? It's always nicer if the, if the neighborhood can kind of settle their own issues.
Just let them know that we'll be discussing it at the next meeting in two weeks and if they would like their opinions heard, to be here for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At least then they've been given ample opportunity. And if they, you know, choose to do nothing further, then, you know, all we can say is we at least gave them the opportunity, so.
Okay. Roll call, please, Misty.
Smack?
Yes, to table.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Awesome. Number nine is public hearing, Eagles Landing Phase Two project.
Publication is on file and no comments have been received.
Excellent. I will have to say on both, both our bid openings, which was held last Tuesday, we got excellent pricing. Eagles Landing for the roadway and infrastructure came in a million dollars less than the engineer's quote. And I'll go on to Water Trails when we're discussing that. But it's really looking good and looks like we're gonna get started probably as soon as the end of July.
Mayor, are they gonna fix that curb that we talked about moments ago when you go to the right, which would be?
That is part of the project. Yeah, and I'd just appreciate if you'd come up to the podium. Just so you know, for the audience, and I guess we are holding an informal conversation about Heather, but the audience, because we do record this, they can't hear you if you're speaking from beyond the chair line. So that's why we have you, one of the reasons why we have you come up there, plus to have it for historical reasons in our minutes. Any comments during public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:12. Resolution on item 10, Resolution 6853, approving low bid in final contract, et cetera, with Ross J., I hope I'm not saying that incorrectly, for the Eagles Landing project.
I move passage of Resolution 6853.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Number 11, public hearing for the Water Trails Project. Water Trails Project was originally, the engineer's estimate was 350,000, 354,000, somewhere around there. And that one came in at 154,000. And that was, yeah, 200,000 less on that project. And that was by Peterson Contractors. So we had 12 people, we had 12 bidders for Eagles Landing and 11 for the Water Trails Project. So it was very competitive.
So on that Water Trails, I remember it being like our share, like the city's share was only like 20,000 or something like that.
Right.
So is that still our share and they pick up everything else?
Yeah, pretty much. It's actually, I don't really think it's gonna cost us anything, just the engineering that we'd already spent for that project. Since, yeah. There may be some like, you know, since it is a state grant, there may be some like, up to a certain amount. They do it by percentages usually, so we'll probably end up paying a little bit of that. But when your project is $200,000 less, then it'll definitely benefit the city.
Yeah, well, I suppose it benefits everybody included in it, I mean, the taxpayers and everybody.
Yeah, residents and, and surrounding people that love the water, so.
With the water up, we may be even able to tube again.
Yeah, right. Our kayak, our.
It'll be a little cold.
Without dragging bottom.
Any other comments during public hearing for the Water Trails Project?
Just for the record, publication is on file and no other comments were received.
Thank you. Well, close public hearing for Water Trails Project at 6:14. Number 12 is Resolution 6854, approving low bid, final contract, et cetera, for the Water Trails Project with Peterson Contractors.
I move passage.
So moved.
Second.
There we go.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
13, Resolution 6855 was approving a change order, was actually number two, for the wastewater treatment plant project. That was, there, there was a issue with a staircase and the landing. And if you go down there right now to look at it, it's a hot mess down there. I would have had to deliver something down there yesterday. But it was a secure, it was a safety issue. So we all looked at it and the People Services, McClure Engineering, and Woodruff, and to come up with a solution that wasn't overly expensive.
I make a motion to approve the change order number two for the wastewater treatment plant project.
Second it.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
14 is Resolution 6856, approving fund transfers for the FY '24 budget year. When we talk about fund transfers, I'm, I'm not sure everyone is aware what we do. But in order to have, when you have debt service, you gotta transfer from, like the TIF area, whether it be Home Acres or East Heights or whatever, you have to transfer into debt service. So you have to have a, you know, chronological order of all that that goes on, plus lost. Because lost comes into the lost fund and then it gets transferred to 20% to capital, 30% to employee benefits and insurance, and 50% to road use. So that's, we have to log that all throughout the year as part of our transparency for our auditors and for our residents.
I move passage of Resolution 6856.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Number 15, request to approve replacement pump for Fogdill Lift Station in the amount of $3,261 with electric pump. That was approved verbally on May 31st of 2024. Have a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? 16 is request to provide annual donation to Evansdale Fire Association for fireworks and to approve the display of fireworks at the Community Response Center on the 26th of July in the amount of 2,500 as budgeted for FY '25.
So moved.
Second.
And Marcus is here. He's part of the planning team for the Evansdale Fire. It is their 75th anniversary. This will be our major event for the year. And again, it's on July 26th and 27th, with the parade being on the 26th this year in the evening at 6:00. And fireworks and DJ afterwards, and then mud volleyball, tons of Fun Zone games for the kiddos and bands in the evening on Saturday. Oh, and a car show. Can't forget that. And thanks for joining us tonight, just in case anyone had any questions. I'll take a motion to approve.
And Mayor, just before we call for the vote, I would like to, I believe it's probably in my best interest to abstain from this, as I am an officer of the association that would have control of these funds.
Okay.
And just in full transparency, in case there is any type of conflict of voting city money to the association, I will abstain from this vote.
Okay. Thank you.
I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I thought so too. Double your pleasure.
Okay. 17, council to consider seeking options for the heating cooling system at the Community Response Center. Justin and I had pretty, well, I've talked to all of you about this. Justin and I have had a conversation last week of maybe just getting a second opinion to someone else that maybe works on geothermal systems. We are still even, besides the weekend that we shut the system completely down, we are averaging anywhere from 7,000 to 12,000 gallons a day.
Yeah.
So, it's a lot. I don't even use that in a month, or in a quarter, I'm sorry, at my own house. But we have an issue. They did clean the heat exchanger, Air Services did, and it was, it was pretty bad. But they thought that they would see a drastic change. And that was done somewhere around the 20, I wanna say 21st or 24th of June. And the numbers have been still about the same since then. So, you know, is, we have money to put into the system. This is what we've talked about on replacing heat pumps, excuse me, about another 45,000 to do that. We have about 80,000 in that system since 2011. But, and you can speak to this if you want, Justin, but maybe we need to get a second opinion. Justin was talking about how his is a closed-loop system and ours is an open-loop system. That's why we are asking for water. One of the things that also was brought up during all this is we have a six-inch main coming into that. And to reduce the size of that to a two-inch, so all that, it's not calling for all that water when it's opened.
You know, a, a closed-loop system was considered.
Okay.
And I don't remember now. You might be able to go back and look at the original comments and, and designs.
Okay.
But for some reason, a, a closed-loop system wasn't deemed practical.
Okay.
You know, when I looked at the water usage numbers that you'd sent us, really, I guess, you know, the actual cost of the water isn't outrageous. But the idea of dumping millions of gallons of water seems absurd.
Yeah, and they're, they're, they capped us. The Water Works capped us at 750,000 gallons. So when we used 1.5 million gallons between June 15th, or May 15th and June 15th, you know, we're only getting charged for half of that.
Well, I know, so it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, but.
So far, so far.
This is not normal.
No.
I'm guessing, so there's something.
System now.
Well, I mean, is the system different than it has been?
Worn out.
Well, we've got.
Well, then something needs to be looked at.
Lots of different contractors have been involved. So lots of different parts over the years.
So you're saying it's normal for a worn-out system?
Well, so my thought was, is to actually bite the bullet and pay someone to take a look at converting it over to like a conventional air conditioning system or conventional heating, whatever it might be.
Well, I don't think it'd cost anybody to have somebody come over and tell us.
No, not a contractor. We want somebody objective. Somebody who could look at the existing usage and system and compare that to a new conventional heating or cooling system. Otherwise, I don't see where we really get a, a big picture.
Right, what it would be, you know, this is what, we know these are set costs in the next five years. Or look at this cost in the next five years, right? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or even beyond five years, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, we know what our, I mean, we have a good idea of what it's gonna cost us in the next five years. And that's, that's saying everything runs as is. There's no more hiccups.
I think we need to, yeah, get somebody over there at least that knows what they're talking about and figure out what's the best way to go.
Well, you know, we could easily get a contractor to come in and say, well, you know, you could do this and that. Then how do you bid it? You know, you bid it with his specs? He's, he's developed specs for us that favor him. So an objective spec writer or engineer would give us, I think, a direction. I don't even know what it would cost, 2,500 maybe, 3,500? But I, I don't, I don't think we have a direction now.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I landed with it as well, is I'm not looking necessarily to try to salvage it. But at this point, and again, it's, it's probably long past this point. We're spending good money after bad, it seems like, and big picture. Okay, we're, we're trying to band-aid the system. What is it gonna take to gut the whole thing? Can you convert it to a closed-loop? Is that even the best system anymore? Do we, you know, and, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking these questions, big picture. It could be that, yep, you have to rip up the whole basement, the whole garage, everything. It just, it would be like you're building a brand-new building. Okay, well, then that's probably out. Or it's, nope, we can just, you know, loop it around and put the two ends together and it becomes a closed-loop system. I'm, I'm definitely not an expert, but in just learning about the system I had put in, I run geothermal, the big thing that was the takeaway, that I've read, that what I was told is anything is the open systems are really only practical when you're by your own body of water, because you would cycle through the water and share the usage. Because if you pull from like city water, you're paying for it. And then at that point, it is not practical. The closed loops are more expensive typically, but in the long run, as we can probably attest here now, it's not more, or it's not less expensive, you know, in the close. Again, I don't know what it was all considered when the building was built. I definitely can't recall what the conversations were then, nor did I have any level of understanding of geothermal back then that I remotely do now.
So I, I guess I'm not following you, Justin, on what you're talking about ripping stuff out.
He's seen hypothetically.
Yeah, what can be done? Because, you know, we can't keep using this much water.
Is what we'd be doing.
Yeah.
But certainly, an engineer could take a look at a ground loop too. I mean, that's what, I guess I'm hoping we could achieve some choices.
Right.
So, yeah, I was in favor of just, and not saying anything, Air Services, I think, has done well for us. They've come in, I know, I believe their pricing's been competitive, they've always been responsive for us. So not to say that they're doing a bad job, but we've kind of got recommendations on where they're sitting at from Air Services of Iowa. I know I use a, a different vendor that's been doing geothermal for a long time. I don't even know if they'd be interested, but even just asking, just say, hey, just come in and look at it and give us big picture and answer these questions. And I know we've tried that in the past, but I think we may be at another crossroads to say, hey, we need to ask these questions again because we're back using way more water than we ever should be.
I would have to agree with you.
I mean, it would be a starting point. I, I don't, I think that, that's the least expensive way to start. And then get, at least get some kind of a recommendation from another company, maybe that dills in geothermal. And, you know, Justin and I talked about that and he is working with a different company now that, you know, their advertisement is geothermal. Maybe just get a second opinion.
Or a third.
Or a third.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that you guys, when Chad was in office, had others coming, or was that just always in regards to the water issue?
Yeah, well, well.
Never.
Because the original contractor was no longer in business.
Right.
I think he was out of Iowa Falls.
Okay.
So they tried to get any trained contractor to work on it.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know. You know, I see this just like, uh, the boat ramp project. We, we don't ask one contractor to design it for us. We ask an engineer to design it for us.
Okay.
And then we bid it to contractors.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's the direction, I think. It makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to get opinions. Those are free.
Well, no, it sure.
Opinions are free.
It sure wouldn't, but where's the get-go's then?
A closer idea.
Six months down the road, you say, well.
I can make a few phone calls in a week and find some information.
Yeah. Uh, okay, I'm open to that, but I, I, I don't know. Uh, this is how we've gotten twenty-two years later with the system we have.
One for long. I just think that's crazy. I mean, the, the amount of water that that's using is, is nuts and there's gotta, there's gotta be something.
Yeah, it's hard to even comprehend.
With technology, the way things have come along, there's gotta be something.
Yeah, and the, you know, it's going to be on the Water Works' next board meeting. I, when is that, seventeen?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, you know, I encourage you to come because they're, they're not going to be Mrs. Nice, Mr. and Mrs. Nice Guy anymore, because this is costing them money. When you're throwing one point five million gallons of water into a system that has to be treated, though, you know, that water has to be treated, the chemicals.
They aren't figuring out right now.
Yeah.
Or seemingly so.
And it must, it must seem to them that we're not really doing anything about it.
Yeah, he, a, a board member asked me tonight before the meeting, again, what are your plans? And I'm like, well, we're going to move forward with something. We are going to do something. We're not going to continue to feed the beast. So I mean, I'm open to both, both.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to getting some engineers involved, but after we find some opinions, it might be a better idea. Yes, sir?
Closed loop was argued back. I mean, I, I couldn't believe that they didn't put that in, but we were told back then that they could not dig their own well to make a closed loop because of the dump that was close by there. Yeah, it was an excuse. I just don't think they wanted to put it in because the water that they're using, you don't drink, you don't treat, it just circulates back around. Uh, basically, you have no water bill whatsoever. But the thing I'd like to know is, uh, with all the improvements of my, before we dumped the, that thing down there, how long is the life expectancy of that thing supposed to be now that we put all the money in it that we have?
Fifty years.
How many?
It's a fifty-year system.
A fifty-year system.
And we're at.
Long way to go and if.
Yeah, we're at midpoint.
Yeah.
We're at fifty percent.
Bigging a well for that isn't like digging a well for your well water. It's a whole, altogether different deal. They just basically, you know, hose goes down in the ground and it just circulates the ground and it goes right back in the same place it came from.
Yeah, but, you know, that, that was one of the systems. Uh, that was the one they called the pump and dump system. And, and that's right, it was contaminated water, but we would just dump it the same way we're dumping the water now. I, I think Justin's talking about a closed-loop system.
Yeah, my son has a closed-loop and there's no water dumped anywhere.
No.
Yeah.
Correct.
Unless it's looped.
Yeah, my system is a closed-loop. And I think the other piece, the, the difference is the, the, oh, the pipes, for lack of the term that I'm, I know I'm not stating correctly. There's a vertical install and then a horizontal install. And the vertical install of those pipes that the water or the liquid goes through to get into the ground to either cool or warm, that's the benefit of where the geo comes from. It uses the ground to heat or cool the, the, the liquid that then comes into your HVAC system. That can, can be done in both open and closed-loop systems. So it purely just needs to know, uh, that sounds like, I think that was John talking, just where that water comes from. And if you have your own aquifer, your own well or something, the cheaper system is the open source because you just allow it to circulate the natural water in and out of the system. It obviously is regulated better because it's in the ground already in the body of water versus a closed-loop, which isn't as efficient because then it has to go into the ground in itself just inside the piping to either heat or cool. So I think that's the real trade-off, but as far as the piping, the horizontal system that was put down at the station, I believe is correct because they could not go vertical, um, which would be the better way because again, you get further into the ground. Uh, but as far as the open to close, my understanding is regardless of vertical or horizontal, the system can be either or.
No idea. So do you, between all of us, maybe reach out to some other companies? I have one that I'm particularly interested in, um, that Justin has personally used, um, that I'd just like to reach out to them and kind of tell them what's going on and see if they'd come in and we can talk about it again the next meeting? Maybe between now and then? Have them.
We'll have more information.
Yeah.
At the next meeting, hopefully.
I know. I, I see the smile. I.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm skeptical. Let me put it that way.
No.
But if that's what you want to do, I'm okay with it.
Just maybe one more.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I've been through enough of these discussions.
Yes, you have.
But, you know, it's a new council, so.
Yeah, twenty-four years of them.
Yeah.
Twenty-two years.
We haven't had that many discussions.
Twenty-two years, though, I know.
The last fifteen.
Yeah, it's, yep. Um, this is just a council to consider. We don't really need to take a motion. Um, we'll just go on, next item. I'll reach out to somebody if you know of anybody or.
I've got a few people in mind.
And then, uh, I can even also get some quotes for engineers to look at putting something together.
Yeah. That'll work.
Okay. Okay, number eighteen, request from Mayor to approve annual IT services with computer troubleshooters in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents as budgeted for FY twenty-five, as you see the breakdown, um, City Hall and Public Works. And then also a portion of that is Water Works, because I think the total was like, what, twelve something? Yeah, twelve or thirteen? I forget, I'm sorry. Do I have it with me? But that, that other portion is, yeah.
Fifteen-five.
Okay, that other portion is paid by Water Works, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, number, number nineteen, request from Public Works to purchase a twenty-twenty-four Hustler S Z zero turn in the amount of thirteen thousand eighty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, we had a mower go down. Um, it is a two thousand nine, um, Hustler mower, um, that needs new engine. So we, you know, I emailed everybody and it was consensus of the council at that time to move forward, um, with the purchase instead of sticking thirty-five hundred dollars into something that's fifteen years old already.
Right.
The, and continuously, it, it gets, it gets ran continuously during the season. That's, you know, they're good mowers. We've had no problems with them.
Yep, fifteen years out of them that gets used that much, I'd.
Yeah.
I'd say.
And I think somebody pointed out, we have over two hundred of eight, two hundred acres that we mow during the summertime, so that takes its toll.
It does.
Especially in a season like this one.
Now, last year, not so much.
And the year before.
So I would formally move to approve the request.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor Council reports, um, I don't have much, just a reminder again about, uh, because we will meet one more time, I guess, about the, um, Evansdale Fire, Fireman, uh, seventy-fifth anniversary. Hope you all come out, including council, because I think, oh, good, nice, we'll stick that on the wall. Thank you for that. Get some posters. We'll get them, uh, posted on Facebook pages and all that. So I've been kind of referring people back to your page at this time, but we'll still do that. But if you can give us a JPEG of that, we'll put that on our Facebook page and website as well. Counsel?
Um, so I'd like to get that, uh, lot on Bright Street.
It's on the next agenda already.
Is it really good?
Yes, it is. Uh, I had someone stop in and talk to me about it today, so it's on there right now. So thank you.
There you go.
Um, I had occasion to ask the, um, Fire Chief where they were on their, um, new washer that we.
Yeah.
Approved, and, uh, he said that was kind of up to us, so are we moving ahead with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, you didn't have anything that you?
Well, I haven't found anything, um, that specifically states that it will do the turnout year. Whether or not what I have will work, I don't, I don't know. Um, but the ones that he showed me looked good. Didn't know if there's any other sources around that could do any better price, but I mean, they're pretty expensive, but, um, it sounds like it would be well worth every, every penny of it to take care of the gear that they do have.
Right.
And.
Yeah.
Be able to turn that around quicker.
Yeah, I think there's struggling with what the system they have right now, which isn't very good. I don't know if you've seen it or not, but, okay.
You know, not only that, but at some point you start to wonder whether, you know, all the carcinogens are being removed.
Right.
That sort of stuff.
Right. Yeah, I, I hadn't heard much about him or about that from him, because I just assumed that he was maybe getting additional quotes. I think he only had one at the time.
I mean, he mentioned talking, talking to you.
Yeah.
And you, you didn't have anything.
Yeah, I haven't been able to find where I can get exactly what he's got and with all the same sanitation ratings and everything. It, it had quite a few specific things that were key to that and key to their, their industry, so.
Okay.
Specific information I hadn't even seen yet, so.
Okay. Well, I will request that he gets another quote and that we move forward with that and get it on the agenda.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
So other things coming up is, um, we, which we won't do until August, is, um, to do a resolution to, um, approve us getting a grant, um, because we were going to get a fully-equipped quad or whatever, side-by-side, whatever you want to call them, side-by-side. Maybe that's a better term. Um, and, you know, had, had talked to Black Hawk Gaming previously about that. Um, and, um, ambulance. Um, they're three years out right off the get-go, even if we decided today. Um, some of us, some of us here had went to, um, Lifeline. It was a pretty cool experience. You know, from, we got to see from, basically from bottom up, um, how the whole process was, what was part of the process, and it was pretty impressive. Um, locally, you know, I, I call that as local as you get for a builder, for ambulances. Um, you know, obviously, I think it'd probably be in our best interest to get additional quotes, you know, but it's not like it, I think the next, the next closest company is in Missouri, and I don't, I don't see us doing that, but I'm sure they have brochures and.
It wouldn't hurt to see if there's a huge discrepancy between the two places.
Yeah. And what one offers over the other. I'm sure they have some kind of a spec, you know, specification specs on what they offer. But that's.
Make more sense to go local.
Yeah, and obviously, that's, that, again, that's three years out, so, you know, monies that have been set aside and we'll have to be budgeting for that moving forward.
Do the, the two that we have, are they Lifeline?
Yes.
Both of them?
Yeah.
I'd forgotten.
Yep. Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you all for coming by.
You too, Justin. Stay cool.